October meeting of the Athens City Commission on Disabilities Accessibility Committee. My name is Davi. I work for the Athens County Board of DD and they also co-chair this committee with Noah. Diane, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Diane Bouvier and I used to work at Ohio University and now I am currently retired and working on different things within the community related to accessibility. Go Noah.
Thanks Diane. Yeah, you look like you're in a great spot there.
Yeah, it's a little log cabin. Can you see?
Looks amazing. Looks very nice.
And the log cabin actually is pretty accessible, but the steps coming into it are not. So that's, they never quite get everything right.
Ah, so leave them some notes.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, so I think some of our other members are maybe either on vacation or unable to join us today. So we will just do the best that we can.
Sounds good.
And what, so yeah, the first thing that's on the agenda is to go over the Athens City walk and roll audits that we've been doing. Did you want to introduce yourself Noah? You're okay. Okay, this is Noah Trumbly. Everyone knows Noah Trumbly. So I'm gonna go ahead and pull this up. And I'm gonna go and share my screen so we can take notes as we go. Okay. So Rob's been working on this and did some updates of it. And some of the major updates are just including some pictures of the areas. And then some pictures of some of the things that we noted as accessibility entrances. Do you think that's, you know, very helpful?
That's great.
So what I'd like to do today is just kind of make something that would be a really quick synopsis of all these notes that we have here, some overall general impressions of what we need to do. And overall recommendations that we can give to the city. But also, I think we want to make specific, some specific suggestions as well, so that things don't slip through the cracks when the project's being completed. So Diane, let me know that I have taken notes because of travel. How do you suggest that we do this Diane?
Um, do you want to just take the major categories and see if there are themes that we found that we want to just say when you think about sidewalks, think about cross slopes and that turning, it's like difficult to turn, I don't know, like general things like that. Or when you, when there's a driveway that merges with a sidewalk, you have to think about cross slopes or I'm just, I'm trying to think of what kinds of things we've noticed.
Okay. Yeah, I think, and we have some overarching comments for the project is kind of where we put these notes.
Okay, sure.
And I think we could just start right there. I think that's a smart idea. So crosswalks should have a different texture such as such as stamped brick between the parallel white lines used to delineate sidewalks. And this is another note, planters should be added to the streetscape design, but not abstract walkways.
Okay. Or entrances.
Yes. Okay, and then when driveways now
Over Yeah.
Sidewalks. Cross slope.
Level.
And crosswalk should be level.
Um. What are the other major ones? Um, Rob talked a lot about having a, like a place where the furniture went, the benches and planters and all that versus a place where the pathway was. I think he he put the furniture by the street side. Is that part of what we had talked about?
Yeah, absolutely.
Street side and then, except not where the exits are for accessible parking. So they want to think about not, like not having anything where there's accessible parking.
Exactly. So they should be, okay, so planters and benches should be added to the streetscape design, but not abstract walkways or entrances. They should be on the roadside of the sidewalk.
Except where there are accessible parking spaces.
Yes. Um, let's make a separate
Okay.
For accessible parking.
We thought about a few things for that. One was to have indentations where the sidewalk would allow that would make it easier to get out and into it or a vehicle.
Yeah, exactly. I think
So for the sidewalks.
Yeah, so first, how, how tall did we decide curbs could be?
You know, there was no, um, Noah, when we looked at the ADA guidelines, there was nothing related to height. In fact, we asked, we, I emailed the access board in DC and they said there's nothing that says any specific height. So I wonder if, um, are there things that the two of you have noticed when you've been parking that make it more difficult? I know when they're too deep, it's really hard.
Yeah, I think especially when it's too, when the curb is more than six inches high. It prevents my ramp from coming out and I think it prevents a lot of people's ramps from working correctly. So that's one note that I'd like to make. And then we can move, so I would say for accessible parking, curb should be six inches or less. How would I describe that?
To allow for easy entrance and exit, or I don't know.
Allow for van ram access. There should be no planters and benches or other objects.
Right. Blocking any doorways.
The spot. For accessible parking, we recommend having space to the left of the we, we recommend having an indented spot.
Yeah, like a, yeah, an indented space that goes into the sidewalk when there's, when it's wide enough. So what do they call, is there a word for that? Indented sidewalks?
Yeah, that's one of those Rob things.
Some places with six inches have some problems.
Yeah, because of, you know, cracks in the curb, cracks in the sidewalk and that kind of thing, right? Yeah, absolutely. Or, or if this, you know, if the space isn't like deep enough or wide enough. So for accessible parking, we recommend having an indented space that goes into the sidewalk and wide enough so that stripes can be put to the left of the vehicle for those who exit their vehicle on the left side. I can say driver's side.
So yeah, so people exit both the right side and the left side of the vehicle.
Yes.
Depending on what their van car is. Need to have parking spaces that allow for both kinds of safe exit and entrance.
Yeah.
So having even a, um, a system where they, they they have both, like they have them on each side of the street or they have them especially on one-way streets.
Yeah, definitely. Text wrapping.
Four inches are better.
What entrances are better?
Four inches are better.
Four inches. So, so Davi said no more than six.
And Noah's saying four inches are better. So let's, let's make the recommendations at four.
Okay. And if there's an indentation, it can actually be ramped a little bit.
Yeah.
Have a little slope to get up to the sidewalk. So it could conceivably be level with the ground and then ramp up towards the sidewalk if they could keep it not too steep.
Yeah, I think that's definitely, uh, you know, something to, to consider as well. Rams up to the sidewalk. Then be included. Okay.
Um.
I think some, some other issues that we have, um, so for buildings that are inaccessible.
For building entrances, yeah.
Okay, for building entrances that are not wheelchair accessible provide a ramp or a tiered, um, tiered sidewalk.
Right.
To enable entrance.
I think one of the things we noticed, or you pointed out to me, I wasn't, I didn't, hadn't noticed, um, was that the area like in front of the bank that is sloped makes it really hard to enter if you're using a wheelchair, like it can't be sloped at the doorway.
Right, yeah. I think that's a really important thing.
Yeah, so for building entrances that are not wheelchair accessible, provide a ramp. But you don't want to say provide a ramp that's sloped into the doorway. You want to say something about the entrances should not be sloped right at all. No, no cross slope at all. Another, another recommendation even is if the doorway does not have a, a button and is hard to open, they should, we should, they should be recommending to all businesses that they have a sign about how people can gain access.
Yes.
So even just saying, you know, we, yeah, I mean, we recognize they're not going to fix everything at once, but they could put a sign up and say, "Call here" or "Push this button" or "Ring this bell" or and it, it shouldn't always, well, trying to think for for people who are deaf, they wouldn't be using a phone, but they need to yeah, something, it could just be ringing or something. Or other ways to contact, yeah. What are the other general ones?
LPI.
LPI?
For crossing the street.
What does LPI mean again?
Great question. Let's, let's see if I can find it up here. I think, I think it means like you push the button to be able to cross the street a little bit longer.
Oh, right, right. Having it timed so that the bu, people can start crossing the walk before the car turns.
Yeah, I think that's a
What the LPI is?
Yeah, the LPI, yeah, that's what LPI is, is having, having a time so people get a head start in crossing the light turns. But then there's also the, like a beg button, I think it's called. I forget exactly what it's called, but you push it to, in order to gain more time to cross the street.
Oh, right, right, right. Should we explain what it is?
Yeah. Between
Yeah, I'm looking up LPI in my phone. It's got Lightning Protection Institute, the Leadership Pittsburgh Incorporated. LPI.
Okay, so I just had, this is log time between when the light turns red and the other lane turns green to give pedestrians a head start.
Leading pedestrian interval.
Okay, all of that on there.
Right, that's LPI. Typically gives pedestrians a three to seven second head start. Yeah, so there's two. One is the leading pedestrian interval and then the other is to extend a time for, um, for crossing.
Okay, crosswalks. Crosswalks should meet ADA requirements.
Right.
Which certainly do not now. Um, no lip.
Right.
Between street and
Or curb
Yeah.
The the slope of the ramp should be within ADA guidelines. I don't remember what the percentage is, but
Yeah, but they, they should know.
Yeah. There should be truncated domes to indicate wherever somebody would be crossing the street. Like they're going into traffic, going into a line of traffic.
Street and the domes should point towards
Yes.
The next
Crosswalk. And they should be aligned. Ours are just not aligned.
Yeah, I, I think that's, yeah.
Clear. Parallel white lines used to delineate crosswalks, yeah.
We recommend talking signage.
Talking signals?
Yes.
Um, for especially the major streets. The major intersections.
Yeah. Uh, and, oh yeah, right, intersections instead of just major ones, intersections. Yeah, is there anything else with curb cuts? I know some in crosswalks, I think some additional things that we talked about are, a lot of the hills are just very steep.
Right.
Um, so maybe when possible look at how to make curb cuts that are currently too steep accessible by raising the street.
Right. Yep.
I'm really, I'm really thinking about just Court, Court and State Street because those are like going up on the
Terrible. That's, that's where I fell over.
Yeah, I still remember that. That was I looked over there and you just fall into the street.
Right over. Let me think here. Um.
So
Yeah, one of the other protruding objects.
Uh, you're, you're better at language around protruding objects.
So, so the ADA says things shouldn't be more than four inches out if they're not within a detectable cane area. So, so if, so just a reminder that when signage or art projects or other things are affixed to buildings, that they need to be mindful, like they need to keep them within the ADA range. So let's see, so there was that about protruding objects, but then there was also guiding around like the gas lines and the Noah, you had some good ideas about putting plants there or putting, like decorating something to make people go around them easily. So I'm trying to think of how to language that. Um, maybe, maybe we need to recommend that when there are, when the city is approving projects like art projects, like they must need, there must be an approval process for some of those, right? Um, to be mindful of whether or not the ADA is impacted.
Okay, so I have protruding objects instead of things, it shouldn't say objects.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah, we could say like objects or signs or, yeah, something. Should not be more than four inches out into the pathway. Well, they can be four inches, but it's like within a certain, um, like if they're really low to the ground, then the cane, it needs to be the cane detectable, I see what you mean. Into pathway without cane detectable objects underneath. Right, that's it.
Yeah.
When the city is approving such projects, it should be considered.
Okay.
And then the other thing about protruding objects, um, well, I don't know if it's protruding objects, but sometimes the visibility of the things like the gas lines is not, it's not that visual. Like you can't, vision is low, you're not necessarily seeing it coming. So there are a way to have natural markers.
Okay, yeah, and I'll add that, or signs. Be considered when possible, uh, natural markers could be used like
To, to take people around those protruding objects.
Patient, when I say vision disabilities.
Yeah. Visual disability, vision, vision.
Yeah. Some visual. Okay.
Okay, that's good. Um, trying to think if there were other major ones.
So this will be kind of like the overarching summary of, of what we found. And then we'll include these notes as well, so that one other thing I wanted to note is changing textures of, uh, of sidewalks. We often found that going from brick to concrete, there were issues with that.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if that's something that we should make a recommendation, that sidewalks are all concrete?
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. Or pavement. They could be stamped concrete. Instead of brick.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, even homeowners, everyone does their own thing. When, when the ADA consultants came to do the OU plan, they were amazed that our regulations for the city did not say everyone needed to use the same material. But when I take a walk, as you do too, there's like bricks, there's, there's like the environmental kind of brick and then there's the cracked concrete that nobody repairs and there's everything.
Yeah, and I think that's a good recommendation.
That could be a city code thing.
Absolutely. So I add that on, um. Oh, another thing is, uh, side, uh, sorry, bike and scooter parking.
Oh, right, yep.
And bikes and scooters are left in the sidewalk on ramps or in the way. We recommend designated parking
Spaces.
For these types of
Vehicles. Also, I think we also need to recommend, um, there's some kind of a code office response when it happens.
Yes.
Because it's not just there, but it's like, what do you do when you find it? Yeah, maybe instead of in the way, say in the pathway.
Okay. Code office, we recommend um, guidance from the code office on what to do. And these
In 2021, as the city is updating some of the codes.
Oh, good. That's good. Yeah, somebody needs to be enforcing it. That's sort of what I think, yeah, I think that would be helpful.
I'm, I'm gonna just add one other thing to accessible parking.
Okay.
Uh, we want we recommend enforcement of, uh, parking lots and I mean, there, there's not a lot. We recommend enforcement of parking lots and to include ADA accessible spaces. Right now, they are often too narrow or missing pieces of or missing line.
Right. I wonder if even the city could have guidance for businesses that are doing parking lots to get it right. I mean, they should already know.
Yeah.
If they're hiring a company that does them, they should know what's right.
Yeah, basically it's just not being enforced. It should be in code and/or enforced.
Right. So it's not so much people parking in them, it's the, the parking spaces themselves are wrong.
Yeah. Okay, so I don't see anything else on this one. Let's get into this and see.
I think the other thing we should say is that, um, if these are in the specs for when projects are done, that there should be some accountability to make sure whoever does it, does it right. And if they don't, they fix it.
Yeah.
So it might be, um, I mean, they should put that into the contract. If it's not done right by ADA standards or our city standards or city code, then they're responsible for repairing it.
Noah Trumbly Enterprises is going to start phase two of our city project.
Oh, good.
Great. Great. Yeah, and I think having having you like, yeah, that additional place meeting with uh city planners and Paul Logan, everyone really helps to to keep to keep this. You know, because we're making a report and we'll continuously reference the report and you with city planners as an ongoing part of this accessibility committee. But I think one, you know, just now you just meeting regularly is going to be you know, just as important as that to get this done and get this improved, especially with city code.
Right, right. Yeah, I think so too.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to include the word accountability, accountable, to make. The city should look at accessibility and force ADA and hold the contractor accountable. Yeah.
Great.
Um, any other ones?
I don't see anything new on this. Let's go to West Street Street on the south side. Um.
Oh, you know, the other thing, my sister and I were talking actually about um enterprises that are geared towards um healthcare or seniors or people with disabilities should be required to have more ADA parking spaces.
Yes.
So.
Here's another one, storm drainage.
Right. Oh, that's another one. Yep.
Keep that one in mind while.
Yep, storm drainage. Not put the storm drainage where the pathway is.
I am going to be working with a whole committee of city officials.
Oh, good.
Crosswalks currently.
Oh, rainwater and snow and leaves, everything.
Yeah, everything. What what was the thing that we were just talking about, Diane?
Um, oh, parking, more parking spaces for facilities that are geared towards healthcare or um um older citizens or um or people with disabilities. Any of those should have a higher percentage of um ADA parking spaces.
Okay, we recommend more accessible spaces near services that provide health care, provide services to to the elderly or.
Those with disabilities.
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
Um, so it's for audible traffic lights. And if I'm not mistaken, I think those are those are, that kind of finishes off our.
We didn't do this one, it looks like. Did we do that one?
We did it, but we we had already um like covered so much already that it was all part of the general recommendations already.
Yeah.
Yeah, height of meters.
Height of.
Parking, parking meters for accessible spots. Let me just add this to one of the accessible parking, for accessible parking. Spot, parking meters should be in ADA guidelines. Some are too high currently.
Yeah.
Okay.
These are good.
Yeah, I think this kind of um is where we were trying to get to, so.
Do we need to write the double sidewalk thing? Um, like when the entrance, did we talk about the entrances are too low that we would do the, what was that thing?
The tiered sidewalks.
That you did talk about it, got it.
Yeah, we had it in there, but I think we should include uh some pictures whenever we do the final report.
Yep, I, me too. That'll help them figure out what we mean.
Yeah, and I I think including this whole report when we send it is good, that way we can show the work that went into it, but again, just having having like a one, one or two page report with all these items and a few of the pictures to just kind of highlight what we're talking about would would be important.
Right, yep, totally.
Okay. So we just, we just have another 15 minutes. Uh, one of the other things, and we're, I think everyone's been CC'd in the emails. Um, but you know, our city is putting in money into the Chancy, uh, you know, the Bailey's Trail.
Uh huh.
And so, you know, Diane went and walked it. I was able to walk it once they uh did a little bit more work on the bridge.
Oh, good, good.
Um, yeah, they're really taking taking our feedback and comments um really well. And whenever they put a permanent bridge over that creek, um, it's going to be much, much better. There are some current improvements with drainage so that it doesn't wash away, but it's a beautiful, you know, point five mile hike. Um, it's all completely accessible. There are, you know, miles and miles of accessible bike trails after that, but um.
Did those, but yeah, the first ones I saw.
Yeah, and there there is talk about potentially just trying to figure out some ways to make um some of those trails accessible to a certain extent as well.
Good.
But yeah, I was, I was really excited. The parking was good. Um, they're gonna be adding another parking lot and it's a big, big project, but in terms of accessibility, I think it adds, you know, a new, a new walking path.
Yeah. The other thing, I I didn't see any signage saying things were accessible.
Right.
One of the things they need to start saying is this path is accessible and maybe by not saying the other ones are accessible, that sort of says they're not. That's kind of what I see when I'm driving around visiting places is they just mark the ones that are accessible.
Yeah, I'm marking it on on their website and.
Oh, maps, right, right. So signage helps people know what they can do.
Yeah, and thanks to everyone who's been working. We've been working with ORCA, which is kind of like managing the trails. And I have no idea what that stands for, but. And I think, uh, yeah, Jesse Powers, who used to be a county planner, now she's the executive director of it, and um she and I Jasmine Fancon, Fancoon, um, also met earlier in the week and were able to talk through some of this too, so.
Good.
That's great. Um. Otherwise, I think that kind of covers, covers the day.
Cool.
Um, so for next, for next steps, I'd like to have this, uh, we can kind of work on especially, I think we'll have a more full membership at our next committee meeting, and we can work on getting all this into a more presentable format.
Okay.
And and then, and then the following, and then setting up some meetings with um city officials to talk through some of this and how we want to present it as well, just to to make sure that we have benchmarks put in place and that we are able to follow up on it as we move forward.
Okay. Do you want me to do anything between now and when we next meet? Like I could take the general suggestions and type them into a letter or?
I think, I think that's a great idea. If you wanted to like call it a report and put it in a Word document, um, I think that would be really great.
The walk and roll stuff, we could um just give them the report of things with pictures.
Yeah.
That would make sense. Okay, I'll make up like a report of the non specifics.
Okay, and I'll I'll type up some meeting notes so we have uh something to show the full commission as well.
Okay, and we can see if there's any specific pictures we want to be adding that we don't have yet, like if we need to go get them or.
Yeah, and and I think Rob, Rob Delak did a really great job of putting in uh some pictures, some really good illustrations of some of the things we're talking about. One, one thing that I would love to have done is just for them to redo the crosswalk curb cuts on Union and Court Street. Those were just done so poorly.
Right.
And really, it just takes like gr- grinding down the concrete at the level of the brick, so. Um, I I would like to, Noah, have you talked with people about that at all recently? Or is there a plan to do that? Okay, who who would be the right person at the city to get in touch with? Would it be Bob, Bob Engineer, Bob Huddy, or would it be Paul?
You know, I wonder if we should go to Steve because he was sort of the one that got the rest of the sidewalks done.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's do that. I'll I'll email uh Steve and Bob and Paul and just say, hey, here's here's something that is really causing some accessibility issues currently, and we would like to, you know, it's it's a simple solution which is just uh grind, grinding down the concrete so it's even with the sidewalk.
Right.
Simple. I'd love some truncated domes too, but I'm.
Right now, right.
Right now.
There was something.
Yeah, um, alright.
Did you two happen to see my Facebook post this morning?
No.
I did just see that, Noah. It's uh your, your survey about disabilities in Athens County. Yeah, um, and I know that's something that uh Noah, Noah Tremblay Enterprises has been working on. Um, so that you're able to to further track um and gather some data about disabilities, uh, you know, what kind of ableist things are in place that's keeping things to be more accessible. Um, and just, you know, being able to gather some more data, so. Yeah, if you want to, if it might be good to send it to Diane again and send it to Diane because Diane's so smart about these kinds of things.
Right. Yeah, I'd be happy to look at it.
And also Noah is also working on something that's really exciting to to me and him, and I think a lot of other people. Um, do you want me to give a brief, brief explanation, Noah? Feel free to add on anything that I missed. Um, so Noah and I had a meeting with Royal Action and also Jesse Schmitzer, I think Tom Redford from Royal Action and Jesse Schmitzer from Hatcap Transportation, the Athens County Transportation, and talked a little bit about how to get uh local food delivery to people in Athens, especially people with disabilities or people who are elderly who maybe can't make it to the farmer's market. Um, so there, there's some really exciting ideas about how to do this.
That's great. Noah, you've been doing a great job getting that started.
Yeah, I was really impressed, and I think there, there's an upcoming uh meeting that Noah is setting up for next week about that. Uh, I think it's a lot of, you know, people who are involved in the local food movement within Athens and the surrounding areas that are interested. So, yeah, like I can't go to the farmer's market right now because of you know, the virus and everything, but also it's hard for people to to get there.
Right, right.
And having, you, you know, using some synergies with places that are already doing transportation with Royal Action, CFI, um. There's just so much potential there.
Yeah, I think so too. That's great.
Busy boy.
Okay, and and if anyone.
I need to go now, but I um.
Yeah.
My sister's looking like she wants to leave, so.
Okay, I think we're at a good stopping place too. Thank you everybody, everyone for watching, if anyone out there in Facebook land is watching and um we, you know, if you, if you want to get involved or have any questions, feel free to get in touch. We have a Facebook page, Athens City Commission on Disabilities, and we'd be happy to respond, or you can get in touch with the city as well. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, thanks, Davey. Bye, Noah.